Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of ANC 34G. I am Randy Speck. I'm the Chair of the Commission. I represent the Single Member District that is ANC 34G 03. And my Single Member District encompasses the area basically between Nebraska and Utah and Broad Branch. And we're glad to have everyone here tonight. This is a special meeting that's devoted to the hearing from some of the district agencies who are reviewing the Mairey application before the BZA. And so that's the topic we'll be focusing on tonight. Introduce the other Commissioners first. Chaz, you want to begin?
Sure, I'm Charles Cadwell. I'm the Commissioner from ANC 34G 07, which is in the southwest corner of our broader ANC, bordered by Reno, Nebraska. Basically, on the east bump up against Nevada and come across military over to Reno.
Thank you.
Glad to be here for the second night this week.
Good evening. My name is Connie Chang. I'm the Commissioner for Single Member District 05, which is bounded by, I guess it starts at Legation. East of Connecticut goes up to Western, comes down Broad Branch Road, and then it gets into Legation again. And there's a little bit of a piece of it that goes down between Chevy Chase Parkway and Nevada Avenue to Jocelyn.
Peter?
I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District 6 or 06, which is the west side of Connecticut back to 41st from the Western Avenue border of Maryland and the Chevy Chase Circle to Military Road with the peninsula to the east to Chevy Chase Parkway.
Michael? You're muted.
Sorry, I'm Michael Zeldin. I represent 04, which is Lafayette to Western Broad Branch to Utah.
John?
I'm the Commissioner for Single Member District 02. My district basically goes from Military up to Aberfoyle, North South, and East West from Oregon to Utah.
Okay, we have six Commissioners here tonight. That's a quorum. We have, quorum is four. We're missing, as Peter mentioned, Commissioner Gore. Tonight's meeting is, as we've been holding all of our meetings, a virtual meeting on a webinar. And that means that all of the Commissioners will have audio and video throughout the meeting. And we will make other members of the audience, panelists, as they come up for particular parts of the meeting. Particularly, we're going to have D-Dot representatives and urban forestry representatives who will ask to maybe panelists and we'll talk with them. Throughout the meeting, you can enter any questions that you have in the Q and A and any comments that you have in the chat. And we do ask you to make the distinction between the chat for comments and the Q and A for questions. We will try to answer as many of the questions as we can or ask the questions for you to the panelists who are going to be joining us. And but if we don't get to all of those, then we'll save them and record them and make sure that we can get to them at a later point. As I indicated earlier, the meeting is being recorded and the video for this will probably be up tomorrow or the next day very soon. As I mentioned, this is a special commission meeting and there's some rules that apply there. This is for the limited purpose of hearing from the district agencies responsible for reviewing some aspects of Mairey's proposal to build a sports field at the Episcopal Center for Children. That's the, the application is before the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Our bylaws require that no other topics may be acted upon in this meeting except by unanimous consent of the Commissioners at the beginning of the meeting. Well, there's one item that we do want to raise and add to the agenda and mentioned it at Monday night's meeting as well. And that is a discussion and possible vote on testimony at the Office of Planning, Planning's Oversight Hearing. And Connie has been drafting that. So is there, I just asked first of all, is there unanimous consent that we add that to the agenda? All those in favor? Unanimous consent? Okay, we'll add that to the agenda. And then with that modification, all those in favor of adopting the agenda? Also 6-0. Okay. Well, we can jump right into it then. The first, we first should give some background for why we're here and what we're doing. I know that a lot of people who are attending, we've got about thirty people who are attendees tonight. A lot of you have already heard about this project before and you've got a good bit of background on it. There may be some people who are, however, who have not been at previous meetings. So John and I are going to give a brief overview. John's going to talk about the background of why we're here. And then I'll talk about the procedures we're going to follow for tonight. John?
Okay, thanks, Randy. Our goal tonight is to provide the opportunity for relevant DC agencies to present information related to the proposal to convert the property at the Episcopal Center for Children, ECC, on Nebraska Avenue to a sports field. ECC and Mairey School have reached an agreement whereby Mairey will lease the property and undertake the conversion project. Mairey has applied to the DC Board of Zoning Adjustment, the BZA, to obtain permission to alter the field based on DC residential zoning law exemptions provided for educational organizations. This proposal has generated significant interest in the community, including concerns about the zoning exemption being sought by the partners. Excuse me. BZA process will also involve assessments of the project by other DC agencies. Briefly, the Episcopal Children's Center is committed to its mission to provide educational and child development assistance to children with significant special ed needs. The center paused its operation as a result of COVID overlaid with a deficiency in funding. The leasing arrangement with Mairey will provide an opportunity for ECC to resume its mission to assist special needs children. The field will also benefit Mairey and will enable Mairey to provide students with the sports opportunities and benefits integral to its educational mission as existing resources are insufficient to meet that goal. Project also presents an opportunity for community use of the field in where we have much needed sports facilities. Issues of interest and concern include hydrology and stormwater management, traffic intensity, noise impacts, other aesthetic concerns, and perceptions that such a facility simply is inappropriate in a residential setting. By law, the ANC is authorized to contribute to regulatory proceedings such as that being conducted by the BZA in this case. Tonight's forum will further public understanding of the role of the DC Department of Transportation, the Office of Urban Forestry, and the Department of Energy and Environment as contributing agencies to this BZA proceeding. On March 9th, the BZA will conduct a public hearing on this case, which will incorporate contributions from these agencies. Tonight's meeting is an informational forum. It is not an advocacy proceeding. No commission action will be taken tonight. Nor any ANC action depends solely on this forum. It is one step in a process. On February 24th, this ANC will conduct another special meeting to consider the Commission's position on the application of Mairey School at the BZA. Chairman Speck will now address the procedures.
Okay, as John mentioned, we've been going through this for quite some time now. And this is the second of three special meetings that we've scheduled on the Mairey application. And the first meeting was to pre-hear presentations by the parties. And that was on February 1st. This meeting, as John said, will give the Commissioners an opportunity to hear from and ask questions of the key district agencies that are responsible for reviewing Mairey's application. DOE, we invited to come to this meeting, but they declined our invitation. They don't make a direct input for the BZA. They go through the Office of Planning. And so they preferred not to come to our meeting and answer questions orally. However, we did ask them written questions and we received written responses. And so we'll be going through those written questions and responses later in the meeting to see whether there are additional questions that we need to ask of DOE and additional information that we need from them. As John mentioned, we're going to meet again on February 24th to review the Commission's draft resolution, advising the BZA, the Commission's position on Mairey's application. We expect to make a draft of the resolution available in advance of the meeting so that everyone will have an opportunity to look at it and can ask questions or make comments at that meeting on the 24th. There'll be also opportunities to submit written responses to the resolution or questions to the resolution if that's desired. The Commission must file its position with the BZA no later than March 2nd. And parallel with the Commission's preparation of a resolution to the BZA, the ANC is continuing to talk with the parties in an effort to reach agreements on at least some of the outstanding issues. And we're hopefully, hopefully, we're making some progress in that regard. So this meeting will be divided into three parts. We'll first talk with representatives from D-Dot. Then with urban forestry, which is a division really of D-Dot. And then we'll have the discussion that I described about DOE's response to our questions. Again, please put any comments that you have in the chat and any questions that you have in the Q and A. And as we go through this, we'll then refer to the questions in the Q and A and attempt to answer those, get answers to those as we go along. So the first thing I'm going to do is elevate the D-Dot representatives. Aaron Zimmerman is the first. And I believe he's also joined by Emmy Blondine, Emma Blondine. And we'll make both of you panelists. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight. We really appreciate it. And I know that you've been having discussions with Mairey as they've developed their comprehensive transportation review. And it goes back all the way to their scoping documents when they began thinking about this. So if you could, Aaron, just give us a little bit of a brief overview of the process that you've gone through and what D-Dot's role is in this proceeding.
Sure. Well, first of all, thanks for having us. We're glad to be here and come, come talk to you about this project. My name is Aaron Zimmerman. I'm the Site Development Program Manager with D-Dot's Planning and Sustainability Division. And I'm joined by my colleague, Emma Blondin, who also works here in PSD and works on the review of development cases alongside me. So here at D-Dot, we review any project that basically is not matter of right. Basically, any project that goes to the BZA or goes to the zoning commission. There's a number of other ones we look at too, large track reviews, NEPA, things like that. But as it relates to the BZA, we review all the application materials that, you know, the same ones that you guys review, the site plans. We require developers to submit a comprehensive transportation review or CTR for short. It's basically a traffic, multimodal traffic study. And in the, in the importance of that study is to try to understand the impacts to the transportation network that a particular action or project going before the BZA or zoning commission will have on the transportation network. That could be either traffic impacts at intersections, parking impacts, pedestrian connectivity, a whole bunch of different areas within the realm of transportation. And then what we do is we then provide recommendations to the zoning body, in this case, the BZA, on, you know, what would it take to make a project work? Are there any conditions of approval? Are there any, any impacts that need to be mitigated? And then what should we do about that? And there's a whole universe of things that, you know, we could, we can look at from signage to intersection changes to bike lanes. So, you know, all these different, all these different things. To get to the point of having a CTR that's, you know, that the applicant submits about forty-five days before the hearing. To the record, we go through a, you know, pretty extensive scoping process with the developers. In this case, we scoped out the study last summer and, you know, as part of the scoping process, we, you know, go back and forth with them and decide on what the appropriate assumptions are in the study, the methodologies, the study area, all that, all those things. And then, you know, over the course of the last five or six months, we've had several, several more conversations with them just about how, you know, the, the site plan's coming along, other approvals that they need, like going to the Public Space Committee. You know, those types of other approvals that they have to get kind of in parallel with their BZA approval. And so we're in the process right now of actually reviewing the CTR. We've had a chance to, to read through it and take a look at the recommendations. You know, take a look at their findings and we will submit a report to the BZA by the end of next week. You know, with our recommendations on, you know, if there's any conditions of approval that should be imposed on the project. So taking a look at some of their initial, you know, findings and recommendations from the study. There's a lot of talk about, you know, parking on site. I think there's forty-eight parking spaces. There's a lot of on-street parking around. So taking, so as part of this study, we take a look at, at the parking impacts and, you know, whether the, whether the parking lot, you know, will be able to handle the project, you know, how much on-street parking might be needed. Is there capacity for on-street parking? And their study does go into detail on, on those after they did some data collection. They also noted in the study that there were a couple intersections that might see a little bit more congestion at them during the peak hours. And so we're, we're working with them on what the right solution might be to those. You know, they're recommending possibly some restripings at intersections or updating some traffic signal timings. You know, D-Dot's general philosophy is, you know, not to directly make changes to intersections like that, but to look at more options, like how can we reduce the amount of people driving to and from the project? Are there, you know, what we call transportation demand management strategies to reduce the amount of people driving to the site? But also that means doing things like, you know, including curb extensions or, or looking at adding bike racks or bike share stations, things like that that will help encourage, you know, a few more people to get out of their car. You know, to come to, come to events here at the ball, at the ballpark and, and potentially take some cars off the road so that those intersections would not be impacted, you know, as projected. So that's really kind of where we stand right now. You know, we understand that the community, the ANC are discussing, they have discussed their concerns with the, with the developer. You know, we've occasionally heard some of those from them and that you guys are looking at possibly some other strategies with the developer. So, you know, to reduce vehicle trips such as, you know, busing students in or, you know, monitoring trips after the baseball field opens. I mean, D-Dot definitely, you know, supports those conversations and, you know, looks forward to working with you guys and the Mairey School kind of as we move through the BZA process. But, you know, Emma and I would be happy to take any questions from you all or, you know, just hear some of your concerns, you know, things that, you know, we haven't seen in some of the letters, you know, we've taken a look at the record. We've taken a look at a response document that I think the Mairey School team had come up with. You know, I think there was like twenty pages of questions that they responded to. So we took a look at some of those. But we'd be interested to, your questions from you all or hear any more of your concerns.
Okay, I will defer to Commissioners if they want to start. I've got several questions myself, but if Commissioners want to begin asking questions, or Emma, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I mean, Aaron covered it all. I think, you know, we're, we're here to hear what you all think and answer any questions. You know, we're putting together our report that we'll be submitting next week. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any Commissioners have questions? Chaz, you want to start?
Yeah, Aaron, I'm a relatively new Commissioner. I haven't been with you since September. But every project has an impact of some sort. And so what's the trigger that leads you to then impose conditions? Or is it, is this a subjective thing? Or how do you, how do you decide that you're going to approve, disapprove, or require something different?
Yeah, so, you know, we do have thresholds in which we require mitigation. You know, those are documented in what we call our CTR guidelines. And that's really the main, the main threshold is really like congestion at intersections. So, you know, if a certain intersection goes from like an E to an F, or it's already at an F and it goes to a worse F, that would trigger, that would trigger the developer having to, you know, start to look at some options of, should they directly fix that? Or is there something that D-Dot would prefer they do instead? Multimodal. So, I mean, that's really it. It's, you know, there could be a little subjectivity to it, like, as to like what the best, you know, signage should be curbside, something like that to address particular concerns that people may have. But we really try to be as objective as possible. And you know, this goes back to our role with submitting a report and recommendations to the BZA and the zoning commission is to give them, you know, technical advice so that they can make their decision as to what the, you know, what the best way to move forward is with, you know, either approving, disapproving, or, you know, some other option for a project.
And you're working on that report? So you're still doing that assessment now?
Okay, other questions? Peter?
Aaron, or Emma, just so I understand, does D-Dot see its role as, among other things, getting community comment about the design? Or does it see its role as comparing the developer's proposal against your regulations and best practices? Or do you do both? Do you see, do you see your role as doing both? Either one of you.
All right, Emma.
So, so our report is basically one of many things that the BZA considers. And we're looking at it with the, you know, the eyes of the transportation planners and making sure that, you know, the impacts are going to be addressed and making sure it does meet our our best practices, our standards, and our guidelines. And so that's one thing that the BZA considers. And, you know, another thing that they obviously consider is ANC and community support and community concerns about it. And so, you know, we, we are like one piece of the puzzle when the BZA is deciding on what they're going to move forward with. And I'll say one more thing. Of course, you know, there are mitigations that are often necessary or, you know, required. And that's something that we would like to see community support for. But, you know, we are, we're, we're one piece of the puzzle for the BZA.
Why don't you go ahead with your question? Okay, I'll go ahead with my questions. And I, I think it's going to be helpful if I can share my screen. I'm not sure I can do this, but I'm going to give it a try to see if we can look at the CTR. Well, I'm having trouble doing that. So I'm not going to, rather than spend time trying to figure it out. Let me just ask a question. And I know you've got in front of you, Aaron, the CTR. And I'll just have to just sort of describe it. But if you could look at figures sixteen and seventeen. And, and just for everyone's benefit, since you can't see it, this is a diagram of the expected vehicles traveling on, out of, out of the site and onto the various roads around it. And it's the first one, figure sixteen is the site trip volumes. And the second figure seventeen is two, two thousand twenty-four total future traffic volumes. And I want to look specifically at the cars coming out of the parking lot, which is the site. And there, it shows the vast majority of the cars coming out and turning left. I think when we were talking, when I had a conversation with the traffic consultant for Mairey, and she said that those are reversed. It really should be, the, the numbers should be higher going, making a right turn out of the parking lot instead of a left turn. And I know that that would be a safer exit from the parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, that does look like a typo on the graphic.
Yeah. I, I asked them if they were going to change it, but it apparently hasn't changed yet. But what my, my real question was, would it be appropriate there at that exit from the parking lot to have a no-left-turn sign that would at least discourage people from making left turns there, given the fact that it would be safer to make a right turn out of the parking lot?
Well, it sounds like, I mean, from, from what they are projecting at that intersection, really only about three, two to three cars going left out of there. So they probably, you know, it may not necessarily be a restriction that's needed. It might just be that the natural demand for coming and going from here comes from the south and the west, and that that might not be necessary. I think generally, you know, we generally don't like to necessarily put in restrictions upfront if there's not like a necessarily a problem yet that's, you know, been, been identified. It, you know, this could be something that, you know, we can, you know, kind of put on our list of things to continue to talk with them about with, when they come in for their, you know, their final approval of their, of their curb cut to see if that's a restriction that's necessary. I guess there's the concern about just the amount of traffic kind of crossing over the center line to get in there. There might be a lot of conflicting or a lot of cars stopped in the street.
Right. That, that would be the concern, I think. And given the fact that that curb cut occurs at sort of the top of the hill there, going down toward the park. And there's a pretty significant slope there. Are there any concerns about sightlines for traffic coming out of the parking lot?
That's one thing that we did talk with, with Mairey about. And, you know, making sure that parking is, there's no parking within those sightlines for make sure that, you know, there's visibility there. But I think, you know, the, the curb cut was a, we saw many iterations of it in a lot of different places. I know you'll hear from urban forestry a little bit later. There are some heritage trees on the site. There's a lot of utilities. It was kind of, you know, fitting, trying to find the best place for that curb cut. And, you know, that, that ended up being the location. And so making sure that, you know, we can get as much visibility for that curb cut, especially for pedestrians that are crossing the sidewalk there is, is definitely important and something we've talked with school about.
Okay. And I know they moved the pickup and drop-off spot for the, for the buses further to the west. And I guess that, that improved the sightlines then.
Yep, yep.
Okay. If you could look at page twenty-four of the CTR. And this is a, the recommendations for improvements. And I guess these are going to D-Dot essentially for improvements that, and you, you mentioned the mayor in, in your introduction for improvements at the intersections of Nebraska and Utah and the intersection of Military Road and Twenty-seventh Street. Sort of independent of all of this, I've been asking D-Dot for some time to look at the intersection of Military Road and Twenty-seventh Street to see if there were improvements that needed to be made there. And some of the things that, that Mairey has suggested are along the same lines of what I've suggested to D-Dot in the past are those things that D-Dot would consider as possible improvements? I think there would be improvements regardless of what happens at Mairey.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely considering, you know, the, the Wells Associates recommendations at Military and Twenty-seventh. You know, we haven't made a decision yet on whether, you know, we want to take their recommendation or do something, doing, doing something a little bit different or doing something more multimodal. But, you know, it is something that, you know, when we, you know, we will put in our report, you know, what our thoughts are on that when we've made a decision on that. But for, for this meeting here, I would say, yeah, we're definitely considering, you know, all of these as proposed and seeing if they, you know, if they're the best options to go with.
Right. Well, and the, the intersection in Nebraska and Utah, they've suggested a longer interval for the, the light. Is that likely to help matters any? I mean, they, they said that they told us that the, that interval is particularly short right now. And that a longer interval might help the traffic move more, more smoothly.
Yeah, that is one that we're running by our signals people as we speak. You know, typically, I mean, they are right in their studies, typically D-Dot signals have a, you know, sixty-second cycle length. And so fifty is a little bit short. I'm not sure if there's like a historical reason for that or something. You know, very unique to this intersection, but we're going to, you know, take a look at that and see if that's something that can be altered. I know typically our signals team, you know, I know typically our signals team, you know, as it relates to a specific land development project, they typically don't do, you know, one-off signal timing adjustments or signal length adjustments. Because then, then there's, you know, upstream and downstream impacts to other signalized intersections. Because, you know, all the signals tend to be in coordinated corridors and they tend to be synchronized. So, you know, usually on like every four or five year basis, our signals team re, re-times all the different corridors in the district. It takes a long time to go around the whole district, but usually they do that about every four to five years in every corridor. And then at that point, that usually sort of, you know, kind of smooths out the traffic again for, for a while and kind of scoops up all the new development that's happened in that time.
Right. Well, and that signal at Utah and Nebraska is sort of isolated there. There's not one that's very close by it. So it probably operates pretty independently. Okay, look at page A 23, which is the first appendix in the CTR. And there's a reference there to miscellaneous items for discussion, and one of them is traffic calming proposals. And I wondered if there were any thoughts about traffic calming on Nebraska Avenue. People have been talking about, some of the residents have been talking about speeding on Nebraska and whether there, there's anything in the works there that might be a traffic calming measure. I don't think it's really amenable to a speed up or anything like that, but maybe narrowing some of the, the roadway? Are those possibilities that could, D dot could consider for Nebraska?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely in support of curb extensions at the intersection. We also talked about potential curb extensions at the curb cut onto Marais campus. And I think, I know there were some questions about bike facilities. And that's something that is not currently, you know, in the, in the near term for this section of Nebraska Avenue. Further south on Nebraska, there are some, some plans for.
Bike share? Is that bike share you're?
I, I was referring to bike lanes, bike share. This has, bike share, this has been identified as a high need location. So that is one thing that, you know, we're hoping that, that Maria will be able to incorporate into their plan is a bike share station. But yeah, I think, you know, traffic calming is definitely something that we, we support and we want to include, especially with, on, you know, a, a block that has such a high, steep hill. And so, you know, you want to make sure that cars are going slow and, and with a lot more children around. It'll definitely be important.
And Emma, you mentioned a, a bike lane. Is that a prospect for the, I'm thinking specifically of 5800 block of Nebraska, right across from the, the field?
Yeah, it's, it's not right now. This is a part because there's, we, we talked with our bike team and because there's not a whole lot of traffic here currently, it's, it's kind of a calmer area. And so it's not, you know, a high priority place. But looking long-term, you know, a protected bike lane is not something that we would put here because of the classification of the roadway. So, you know, right now there are no plans for bike facilities, but if there are going to be facilities in the future, it would likely be something lower than a protected bike.
Okay, I, I know there's some questions in the Q and A, and I'm going to get to more of those in a minute, but there are several of them related to the closure of Beach Drive. And the fact that it's been closed during the pandemic, but National Park Service is now considering whether to extend that, make it more or less permanent. If they close Beach Drive permanently and traffic resumes after the pandemic is over, whenever that is. Is that going to make a difference? Does that affect the analysis here or have they taken sufficiently conservative approach that that's going to be okay?
Yeah, I don't have the latest update on the closure of that street, but just, I'm, I'm looking on my screen on a, on a map and it looks like it is pretty far away from this site. So I suspect that whatever happens with that's probably not going to have a big, make, make a big difference. And if you, and if you remember on the distribution drawing that we were looking at before with the volumes going left and right out of there. They'll, they only project about 5% of the traffic going up that far up that route. So probably not too many traffic volumes.
Well, I, I think what people are concerned about is that, especially after, you know, Oregon Avenue is also currently closed because of the rehabilitation work they've been doing. When Oregon Avenue opens and if Beach Drive remains closed, Oregon Avenue may become a, a more heavily used commuter route. And the concern is that that's going to divert traffic down Oregon Avenue and on to Nebraska. So that that will become a more heavily trafficked street. After the pandemic and after Oregon Avenue opens and if Beach Drive is closed. Is that something that, that anybody can predict and take into account in this analysis?
Yeah, good question. You know, I, I think that is a little bit outside of the study area of this project, but I do understand what you're saying that, you know, Oregon Avenue might have some a little higher volumes when it reopens, if Beach doesn't reopen as well. And so, you know, could that, could that make the traffic projections a little bit worse? You know, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. You know, traffic tends to disperse pretty quickly around the transportation network. So taking, you know, maybe one street off, if that comes to pass, you know, it, it looks like there might be other parallel streets like Chestnut or, you know, some other ones that might, or, or.
A lot of traffic on Chestnut, I know, but.
I think, you know, I think zooming out to, there are a lot of changes to our traffic patterns that are coming because of the pandemic. And so a lot of that, we just can't predict. And so, you know, it's, it's really hard for us to account for these changes, especially as people are, you know, we're all still at our home except for Aaron. And it's, it's just, you know, it's, it's something that's generally challenging to, to figure out what these future conditions will look like. I will say they did include the, the way that they did their counts, they included, they were from 2017 and they kind of upped it a little bit, but that was before Oregon Avenue was closed for the rehabilitation. So they did account for that in their traffic study.
Okay. Okay, other commissioners have questions? John?
Yeah, I have a couple, just going back to this current part of the conversation. In, in the scoping process, I guess their consultant talks with you about the methodology to make sure it's consistent with D dot analytics. So I, I presume that that occurred with, in the interaction between your agency and, and their consultant. Okay. These are very really on the ground things. It gets back to one of the earlier questions about signage and so forth. I was concerned a little bit about, I'm a resident of Nowood, which is very close to the, to the field. And I go for walks for recreational purposes. And I keep finding my feet taking me over to Marais, so it's not so recreational, turns into a business walk. I was over there today checking out where Stevenson Lane connects to Nebraska to make sure there's proper, no parking signage on Nebraska. And I was, and I was concerned about that and I was satisfied that there's appropriate signage there in terms of game parking. And that Stevenson will be clear of, of any cars, you know, creeping up close to the corner there. But if there are other kinds of things we need to do in the neighborhood, maybe Stevenson might need some signs or, or other nearby streets would need some signs. How would we go about that in, with DOT? I mean, would that become part of the BCA process that that D dot would agree to put some signs in here and there? What, what would be the process for, for those kinds of improvements?
So it, it could be if it's something that's directly related to the, to Marais, then it can be something that's included. But we also do have a couple, you know, we have a 311 request system where you can request if there's, you know, a sign that's missing or fell or is faded, you can request that. If there's a general traffic concern that you have, we have traffic safety TSIs that you can submit also through 311 request system where you can, you know, if there's a, if the no parking sign is two feet from the stop sign and it's, you know, really decreasing visibility. You can request that that sign be moved. You can request that there's an assessment of that intersection or, you know, if you need traffic calming or a speed bump on a road, that sort of thing. That's, those can all be taken through the 311 request system.
Okay, I noticed today, for example, going up Nebraska, there's a 15 mile per hour sign for, you know, for children at the ECC, but it's pretty hidden. It's not all that visible. So we'd have to go through 311 to have that changed?
Yeah, that's, that's a perfect weighted example of what you would do. You would go through 311 and that's something we have basically times that, you know, it has to be addressed within a certain amount of time. You know, you take a picture of that sign and you submit it with the request. And, you know, either the hedges will be trimmed or they'll move the sign to a more visible location.
Just, just one more question. We've been talking about perhaps having school personnel or other people directing people in and out of the parking lot. It would be more or less volunteer flagman. What is the rule about having professionals or licensed people as, as traffic directors? You know, can, can the volunteers more or less stay on the street, on, up to the sidewalk, but once you walk into the street, you need a licensed flag person?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure either.
I know that we, we do have traffic control officers that are often deployed to around schools and busy intersections during rush hour. I'm not sure if that's an option for a private school or if it's just for DCPS. But I think, sorry, go ahead.
I, I think there, yeah, private schools do use traffic control officers. And I understand that there's going to be some testimony upcoming in one of the council's oversight hearings about not, not having a sufficient number of traffic control officers now and that they really need to increase, increase that number. There's apparently a lot more demand than there is supply.
And I, I think Randy, that by the school at the circle of Western and, and Connecticut, Blessed Sacrament, they have a blinking sign at certain times when the kids are coming in and going out and they have school crossing guards there. And so it would seem to me, rather than put the burden on us to put into the 311 system, it might seem to me that this is going to become a more active school zone than it presently is that you guys take affirmative steps to see, especially during high use times, whether or not we can get better signage. Maybe those yellow blinking light signs or other crossing guard types of protections for the people who will be coming in and out of the school.
Peter?
Following on Michael's comment. Several questioners in the Q and A note that both the Marais traffic study. And it seems to me your comments tonight are focused on primarily, almost exclusively on vehicles. When you make your recommendation to, or your analysis, you provide your analysis to BZA. Will it include things like what markings, if any, should appear on the sidewalk along Nebraska where the curb cut is? Whether there should be a pedestrian crossing marked on the pavement of Nebraska at the, at the entrance to the field and so on. I mean, or do you, or alternatively, do you see your job as basically making sure traffic flows smoothly? Emma, I just have to say, you know, putting it to us to file 311 requests. I'm only been a commissioner a year, but I gotta say it's a year of frustration with 311. So that's really sort of, it's not a really great answer, maybe the only one, but it's not a great answer. So.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately it is one of the only ones, but I appreciate your question and the questions about, you know, what our study, what our recommendations are. And we are, you know, fully, we're, we're all about bicycle and pedestrians. We want to make sure that, you know, we're encouraging that people to walk to this space and we're making it safe for, for all road users. I think, you know, a lot of the times the questions are around vehicles. And so that's why, you know, we have a lot of conversations in signals and that sort of thing. But we, we do look at bicycle and pedestrian safety and facilities. We did look at a crosswalk mid-block. But because of the, the sightline issues and not being able to have it controlled, it would be an uncontrolled stop where we would basically be making it as visible as possible and hoping that cars will stop. It didn't seem like the safest option, especially considering, you know, most of the, the cars that would be on the street that would park for the site would be on the north side. And so we, that's something that we talked with the consultants about and decided ultimately not to pursue. But I think, you know, we're, the traffic calming aspects and, and adding curb extensions at the intersection is, is something that, you know, we, we really want to make, make sure that the consultants do as part of this project. Yeah, and, and we have other, we have other elements that we have on the site and talk with them about to encourage more use. You know, making sure that we have a capital bike share, we have safe bike parking, that sort of thing on the site.
Michael?
Well, it would seem to me, watching kids cross the street by St. John's, that you should reasonably expect that kids are going to cross in the middle of that street. And one of the things that you might think about is what they have on Connecticut Avenue, which is a light that when people want to cross the street, they push the button and it turns from a no light to a yellow and then to blinking red and red. And so I think there are a lot of things that, that can be done that have kids crossing streets and going into and out of school that don't seem to yet be your priority. Sufficient to probably mitigate the, the risks to these kids. If this, of course, we are presupposing this thing gets approved and it's happening, it may not, and so this may all be moved. But assuming hypothetically this goes forward, I think you really need to change your focus a bit from cars to kids. And the way kids behave.
I'd like to get to some of the questions that are in the Q and A. Claudia Russell asks, what is the review process for the CTR? So that the comments can go to D dot. There have been a lot of comments that have been made to Marais or to Wells Transportation, but how do they get them to you if there are concerns that people have?
Yeah, I mean, people can submit them directly to us, you know, we'll, we'll definitely take a look and, you know, e- every comment that we get, whether it's CTR related or public space or, you know, and we, and we've been getting a lot of comments on this project. A lot of people have emailed us and we've talked to a lot of folks on the phone. You know, I mean, we, we take every single one of those seriously and we, you know, engage in a conversation with, every time we have a conversation with the developer and the Marais School people, we always, you know, bring them up and, you know, make sure that we're, you know, carrying those forward throughout this process. But I mean, if, if someone has a concern about the CTR, please feel free to email Emma and I, and we can, you know, take a look into it some more.
Would you put your emails in the chat or somewhere where people could find them?
There's another question. It's, can you discuss how the traffic study anticipated traffic related to non-Marais use of the proposed field? For instance, the, the For instance, the, the, uh. Uh, youth groups who may have, uh, practices there or games. Uh, players or parents coming from some distance, they may not be arriving, uh, uh, bu- by bus. I is. Did you review that part of the CTR as well?
I'm just, on my screen, I'm just scrolling through, looking through that part of the CTR, but. Um, yeah, I mean, they looked at, uh, the busiest times. Of the day regardless of who is coming and whether it's the Maray school or some other user of the site. They did look at the evening, uh, the evening peak hour, the AM peak hour, then I'm just scrolling to, to see. They lo- they also looked at the se- pardon me, they looked at the weekday evening and then the Saturday peak hour. So regardless of the time of the year or who the user is, um, you know, they projected traffic and pers- person trips and vehicle trips. Um, you know, for both of those periods, the busiest times of the year and the busiest times of the week.
There's a lot of, uh, things that are in the, the Q and A that are not questions, they're just comments. Uh, I, I, it would be a lot easier for us if people would just limit their. Comments to the chat and the Q and A for questions. Um, there's a question then about, uh, Bingham Drive, which, um, is currently closed as well. And is under, they're just beginning to the rehabilitation of Bingham Drive, so it will be open from. Um, Oregon and Nebraska intersection all the way to Beach Drive. Is that something that, uh, will have an impact on this?
Um, I mean, I would reiterate Emma's comment from before, you know, it's hard to predict. It's a little bit outside of this study area here of the, of the school project, of the baseball field project, but. Um, you know, we, we can't say for sure, um, exactly what that impact will be, but I suspect the further you go away from the site. Uh, the less the impacts would be and the more options for traffic to kind of disperse around.
Randy, could I ask a question, which is just, so, so what is this, I mean, you guys were involved in the scoping here. Beat you had, Bingham Drive is right down the road, I mean, if you could get, if they ever opened Beach Drive and you could go, get either down toward or back up. Um, to, uh, Oregon. You, 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 you're, you would change the pattern a whole lot, um, uh, you could change the pattern a whole lot, I, I mean, and. Portraying that end of Nebraska is not having a lot of traffic, uh, I suspected. Rush hour it does, um, what, 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 so you said it's not in the study area, what was the study area that you helped, um, choose, I take it?
Yeah, so I'm taking a look at the study area, it's Nebraska and Utah, Utah and Rittenhouse, Nebraska and Rittenhouse, then Military and twenty seventh. Those are the four main intersections kind of surrounding it and, and we, we developed that study area based on the projected amount of traffic. Um, and so, you know, the projected amount of traffic is not that significant with this, with this site, so. Um, that limits how far out we have them go and look, uh, as part of their study.
Some questions about buses, about who monitors bus idling, for instance. Is there a three minute maximum for bus idling and who monitors that?
Um, I'm not quite sure, uh, I think DPW technically is the agency that monitors that, I don't know exactly how much monitoring they do. Or how much, uh, enforcement they do around the district, but I believe they're the ones that are supposed to be monitoring it. In issuing tickets if.
How? Does, is there anything that's in the traffic, uh, in, in the, uh, comprehensive transportation review? That encourages people to use buses and how would you do that? Uh, there's an M four bus, but it doesn't run. Um, probably at the times it would be suitable for, for. Um, people riding it to, to games and things like that. Uh, and there's some other buses nearby, but not, uh, they, they may not be running on routes that are. Uh, uh, helpful. How do you encourage people to use the buses?
Well, there's a couple of things we can do, the first is, you know, making sure there's pedestrian connections from the bus stops that they're ADA accessible, that's. You know, one of the things that we look at, you know, as Emma was saying before, you know, pedestrian safety is like the number one thing that we look at with any of these projects. Um, you know, you do have, I, I, I'm just looking on Google Maps on my computer here and I, I see, you know, up Nebraska and Utah, there's bus stops. Um, you know, and there's not any bus stops, I don't think, right on this block, uh, or even up, up a block or two, there aren't any. Um, so it's really focusing on how, how can we get people. As easy as possible from the bus stops that are there, um, to the site and so we can do that. Um, they're also, um, I did see in their study that they're proposing some TDM techniques, uh, transportation demand management. Um, I can't exactly find those really quick here in their study, but, um, you know, we would look, look for them to see what type of. Um, options that they're looking at, but, you know, it is, it is a little bit more auto oriented part of the city, so it's a little difficult. Trying to get that bus mode share up, but that, that is an important thing for us.
Uh, there's a question as whether you would be willing to meet with people from the neighborhood. Uh, about the transportation review.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we're wrapping up our review right now, I mean, I think mainly having comments, you know, a while back would have been. Would be helpful, um, I don't know what value it adds considering that this is going to the BZA in about two weeks. So, um, I mean, I think we'd be interested in hearing if anybody has any, please email us, but. You know, at this, at this point, you know, we're go- we're going with the study that we, we scope with. The applicant, but we definitely would love to hear any comments people have about the study, if there's anything that. Um, you know, any, any things, practical solutions that, you know, the, the developer could implement as part of this. You know, we would, we would be all ears, um, you know, we hear good ideas all the time that maybe we didn't think of, so.
All right, Connie?
Um, I have a question about process, so you provide your review of this, uh, study that the, that the. Um, I guess the proposer, Maray has put together and you're commenting on that, um, and. Um, you've helped them at the beginning, try to make sure that the methodology is really what's generally accepted and so forth. And then you provide your review to BZA, what is your role after? So let's say everything gets approved and, um, all these conditions are met. Uh, what does D dot do? Do you come back a year or two to look at it? I mean, do you then make, uh, um, adjust your, uh, comments, uh, what's your role after this?
You know, it really depends on what those conditions are, um, there are, there are other projects, I think in this area, actually. Um, we had a case for a school project a few months back. Um, where we had the developer come back six months, we had the condition be come back six months after approval and do a study and. You know, confirm, you know, after the traffic volumes have settled and actually hit the transportation network, what the right solutions are. I think in a case like this, I mean, it would really depend on how the condition is crafted, but typically, no, we wouldn't necessarily come back. Six months or twelve months out, the next time that, from a process standpoint, the next time we would be involved in it after the BZA hearing. Would be when they come in for their public space permits, uh, to do the, you know, if they have to widen a sidewalk, get their curb cut. Uh, design approved, um, you know, their streetscape design that they have to complete, that would be the next time that we would be involved in it. And that's the next time we kind of take a look back at what were the previous conditions and make sure that, one, they were done. You know, DCA does a review of that, but we also do a, a review of it too, kind of a, uh, uh, double layered review there. Um, but then some of the things, you know, if it happens to be like a restriping, like one of the recommendations from the CTR for this project. Is to restripe a leg of an intersection, if we ultimately go with that and that becomes a condition. You know, they would, i- it wouldn't be so much D dot proactively going out to the developer and saying, hey, we want to check in on this, it would be more of them coming in for permits. And we know there's another checkpoint in the process where we're involved and then at that point we'll check back in on them, on, on those. And they will have to show on their plans what this new striping is, for example, and then, um, that would kind of go through the, you know, the whole. Public space approval process and possibly to the public space committee and things like that.
So, so what I'm hearing though is for some things, um, or for some projects, not, not necessarily this one. There are conditions where you come back, so what I'm hearing tonight is. There's a lot of, I mean, the pandemic has really, as Emma has said, you know, we really don't quite know the traffic patterns, I mean, uh, you know, I travel a lot. By car and I've seen different traffic patterns, actually, like at different times, it's, it's not exactly the same and it's hard to know, like on this. It's not like Monday through Friday, it's exactly this way, it's like sometimes Wednesdays, it's not, it's just, it's weird, um, so it's hard to know. Uh, but we do have closures and we do have reopenings and, um, and it's not clear what the actual pattern might be. And we don't really know frankly, um, when, um, Maray will bust the kids in and, and parents will come for a game and they leave. You know, like actuality is not, is different than prediction, so, you know, my question to you is, you know, is there a way in your review? Um, if you feel like the data isn't strong enough, uh, or you feel like the objections you've gotten or the opposition you've gotten, um, gives you pause. Um, you could, I'm asking you the question now, you could put a condition that says in a year's time or in a whatever amount of time. That there, uh, that, that a study gets put together or that more data is collected or that something will be reexamined. So I'm just trying to figure out what that could be and when you would make that, like what is the deciding point?
Yeah, I mean, that is a, that's a tool in the toolbox, um, that we use sometimes. Um, usually it's with traffic volumes that are a bit higher than here, uh, than, you know, what's projected with this project. But, um, you know, i- it, it really all depends, um, in, to your comment about the like road closures and not knowing what the traffic volumes are gonna be like. We did, as we scoped the, the study assumptions with that, we had them use, um, you know, a little bit older traffic counts like twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, I think. Um, and, and then use like a growth rate to kind of, you know, project what would have been the traffic volumes had the pandemic not happened. So we were, so, you know, we, those volumes are higher than they were before and they include all the streets that are like. You know, are on the network, not closed, so we did try to use the, you know, something that was more real world, like after, you know, kind of the pandemic settles and things get. Um, back to normal.
Okay, any other commissioner questions? Let me just see if there's one more question here. Okay, I think that's just been answered, okay. Um, I really appreciate it, Aaron and, and Emma, this has been very helpful. Will, uh, uh, certainly be in touch with you, I'm, I'm sure in the future, uh, if we've got any questions. I will look forward to your report that you said comes out next week. Okay, all right, and, um, if there are no other commissioner questions, we'll, uh, let Aaron and Emma go and we'll. Bring in urban forestry. Thank you very much.
Bye, thanks guys, good talking to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let me bring up. Okay, did we lose John?
I think so, not sure why.
I don't know either. Earl, you there? Yeah, you are.
Hey, good evening all, how are you?
Very well. Um, I don't know what happened to John. Earl Uster is, is a, a very experienced arborist and someone that I've had dealings with for. Most of the nine years that I've been a commissioner and, uh, got a great deal of confidence in Earl and his team. Uh, they do really good work in the city, uh, and, uh, so maybe Earl, you can, like we did with D dot, you can just describe. Uh, what your role has been in this process and what, uh, uh, your. Uh, assessment is of the pre-preservation plan and the tree transplant plan that, um, Maray has submitted and how you're. What role you're gonna have at the BZA proceeding as well, if you could just describe that briefly.
Yeah, absolutely, well, thanks for having me, this is obviously a big project in, um, in your backyards and so. I think it always has a good sign that there's so many questions and such interest in, uh, as it relates to. What's planned and what the impacts of that might be, so as it relates to the trees, we were involved early on. Uh, the Maray team and the ECC team, uh, engaged us, uh, maybe not the first group, but we were certainly among the first. I met out there last winter, um, with their team and, and walked some of the site and evaluated the trees personally. Uh, and then we've had several visits since with members of our staff and, and representatives for that project group. So, as you know, uh, they've submitted their preservation plan, they've submitted their tree removal plan. Um, if you've taken the time to walk the site, you do know that, um, there are a great many trees that are actually in, in fairly poor condition. Um, and so I think there, uh, the removal of those trees is non-controversial. Um, there are however, uh, four heritage trees on the private property which will. Uh, be relocated as a, as part of this project if it were to be approved. And then there are two heritage trees, um, at least one in the public parking, it's possible the others in. The public parking as well along the Nebraska Avenue side, um, which need to be also protected as they build the baseball field and the batting cages. And, and things like that, so. Um, if you'd like, I can start with their plans for heritage tree relocation and the sort of, the history of these, um, types of activities in the city.
That would be great.
Yeah, great, okay, so, um, first of all, heritage trees were a class of trees, uh, I'll just do a very brief recap. They're a class of trees that have a circumference of a hundred inches or greater and they were, um, that, that's a class of trees that was established with the passage of the Tree Canopy Act. Uh, Tree Canopy Protection Act in two thousand sixteen and for hazardous heritage trees, no problem, you can remove them. And there are a handful of, um, hazardous heritage trees, I believe there are thirteen hazardous heritage trees on this site, actually. Some of them, I believe, might even be standing dead at this time, but for those ha- heritage trees that are non-hazardous or healthy, if you will. Um, they either have to be protected or relocated and, um, after the law passed in twenty sixteen, it took a few years. Before the first heritage tree relocations, um, occurred in the city, but they've been, they have picked up pace and have been happening. Uh, with greater frequency and so the first heritage tree relocations took place at the former Fannie Mae site. Uh, on Wisconsin Avenue where three heritage trees were, uh, were moved around the site. And I'm sure everyone, uh, saw the press and the media associated with that, those trees, um, are still alive and, um. Uh, I'm fairly confident will pull through and survive long term. Um. And we've had other instances of heritage tree relocation, another prominent example is, um, a heritage Southern Magnolia at the Fuller Shakespeare. Library, which was shifted south on their site to make way for, um, a new entrance to the, to the facility. And similarly, that tree is doing quite well. Um, as relates to this project, the folks that, um, are planning the relocation process are the same people. Involved with the Fannie Mae site and the Fuller Shakespeare site, both of which, as I said, have, um. Have been successful to date and appear as though they'll, that success will endure and if you, you know. The good news about heritage tree relocation is it's not a fly by night kind of activity, so. Uh, I have not come across a heritage tree relocation plan that was. Um, that was anything but thorough, right, but it's, it's quite a substantial undertaking, it requires quite a bit of. Uh, pre-transplant care, um, as well as care and protection while the tree is in the process of being relocated. And then it, it, uh, it's necessary to have a, a, a pretty detailed and comprehensive post-transplant care plan as well. Um, that's included in the plan that's been assembled by Wetland Studies and Solutions for this project. And I, I, I want to mention one part about the law, um, which people may not be familiar with and. That is that the law requires that the tree survive a period of no less than three years after it's been transplanted. And if it doesn't, that's considered a violation of the law, so not only are, not only are, um. Uh, project managers who are proposing to move a tree at a, at a fairly expensive cost. Um, uh, they not only have the motivation of that initial investment to, to transplant the tree. But they also have this three year window after the tree has been moved during which they have to provide protection and care to ensure that, that. Um, it remains alive and healthy, otherwise they will have paid to move the trees and then suffer a fine if those trees should die, so. There's a lot of motive, there are a lot of incentives that are aligned. So there's a lot of motive, there are a lot of incentives that are aligned to ensure that, that only good, only good actors working in good faith and with detailed plans, plausible plans apply. And, and honestly, that's what I see in this case. So those are, that's like a, that's a pretty high level overview of what they've planned. I'm happy to, to answer any specific questions. Oh, actually, if I may, want to circle back to one other item that is not on the plans that they shared or that are in the agenda. Randy, that you shared out. But if you're familiar with the site, directly behind to the north and east of the, the original ECC building is a circle of willow oaks, very mature willow oaks. I'm sure you, I'm sure you and other commissioners and neighbors for sure are familiar with those trees. And I just want to point out that, that, that to us, when we first walked the site and in our, in our correspondence with them since, that has been an area that we have been emphasizing tree protection take place. Now, their original plans showed some driveways going through that area that has since been abandoned, which is a good sign for the preservation of those trees. But nonetheless, there will be activity in and around those trees. And those are, those are without a doubt the nicest trees on the entire site, not just the four and a half acre site that Maray proposes to construct fields on. And so I would just draw your attention as, as a commission here to ensuring that adequate protection of those trees is included in, in whatever final package they propose.
That's a really good point. I know that the, they're called the 12 apostles.
That's right.
That there are only 11 of them now. One of them died and has been replaced. Just a tiny tree now. But yeah, that's, that's really important. I know ECC is very concerned about those trees as well. So Michael.
Yes, I have an, Earl, thank you. One tree, Randy, when we were walking it together as commissioners that I sort of took note of, which I think is coming down. I don't know if this is one of the trees that you were speaking about. It's not a heritage tree. Is the tree, looks like an evergreen that's right near like the, what would be the first baseline on, on the, by the baseball field.
You know. Let me take a, let me.
Remember this, Randy, this tree?
Yep, yep, I know it.
I know there's a white pine on the Nebraska Avenue side that is a heritage tree and it is proposed for preservation. So this is, this would be kind of close to where that abandoned swimming pool is situated. Is that the tree we're talking of?
I don't know.
I don't think it's the white pine. I think there's, there's another evergreen tree that's, it's not, it doesn't have the circumference to be a heritage tree.
Right. And I don't know what shape, I don't know what condition it's in. It just, it looked like a nice tree. But I don't, I don't know much about trees. So I can't tell you whether it was healthy or not, but there's just one Earl that I would have you just look at and see if it is a good, if it is in good shape and it is targeted for being cut down and it can be saved.
Michael, where was it? Where was it when you're looking at it?
Well, my recollection was that it was sort of along the first baseline of the baseball field, close, sort of close to the abandoned swimming pool, but closer to Nebraska Avenue. And is it toward the garbage can?
Okay, I'm taking a look now and if there's, each of the trees, of course, are labeled as well on the exhibits they've presented. So that would also help. I, I can tell you that we've, we have evaluated all of the trees on site that are special heritage and and so while we haven't approved any permit, I probably should have included that in my initial comments. We haven't approved any tree removal or heritage tree relocation permit at this point. We're waiting for this whole package to, to be reviewed before we make that decision. But each of those trees has a number and so that would be, that would be another helpful thing to identify it.
But Earl, I don't think this is, I don't think this is a heritage tree. It's just, it was just a big old nice green, Christmasy like tree.
I see it. Yes, I see it on the, I see it now. I know the tree of which you speak. And I can go to the plans while we're speaking here and try to determine if that's included as a tree for removal or not.
I think that they told us it was for removal, which just sort of, if it's healthy, does it need to be removed? If removal means cut down, does it, can it be moved as opposed to removed?
Yeah. So I think the calculus, I don't want to speak for the developer, but I think the calculus they take on this is if, if you have a special tree, the cost to relocate it is, is often substantially higher than the fee to remove it. So could they relocate that tree? I, I would say they could. But they may have a financial incentive that is still lawful to simply obtain the permit and, and remove it. And I think if I, if I'm, if I'm talking about and looking at the tree that you're referring to, that's an area that, it exists in an area that will become parking lot. Isn't that right?
Yes, I think that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. I think it's sort of like between the first base line, sort of closest, sort of, sort of close to home plate-ish and where the parking lot is right around there.
Yes, yep, I, I see it indeed. Yeah. And so that, that is an area I believe that they have, they have planned to turn into their parking lot. And so my, my, they, they've scheduled for that tree or they have applied to remove that tree.
Is it healthy? Do you, do you know it well enough?
Yeah, it, it is. Yes, I believe it is. Give me a second. I'll pull the exact number up and check what the rating on the tree is. One moment.
I don't mean to take it bold this time. I just, I just sort of liked the tree when we were walking. And so if it's savable and can be saved, I favor that.
Yeah, for sure. And then of course I share your opinion.
While we're waiting here just a second, I, I want to emphasize again, it seems to be some confusion. I said, put comments in the chat, questions in the Q and A. There's been a lot of confusion, a lot of comments going in the Q and A and a lot of questions going in the chat. Should be the other way around. That, that just helps us find your questions.
Yeah. So, and you know, in fact, as I'm looking through the plans like on the fly here, I think it might be best if we circle back on that one and Commissioner Zeldin, and if I could get the, the specific number of the tree, there are several that fit that description. So I just want to give you the best answer possible. I'm happy to follow up with you directly on that afterwards though.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
John.
Our agenda talks about heritage and preservation. I'd like to get into maybe another scope here. What role does your office have in requiring new trees to be planted? I think there's some kind of a formula related to the cars that are parked there. You have to remove, there's kind of, kind of a ratio for planting new trees for those which have been, been removed.
Yeah, okay. From the canopy?
Sure. So there, I believe there are tree planting requirements as part of the zoning that relates to parking lots. I don't know specifically what those, those numbers are. And that's not something that is actually handled or managed by, by our group. That's handled at the zoning level. But in terms of other replanting, their plan calls for establishing a lot of screening around, around the perimeter of the project, of course. But the, the Urban Forest Preservation Act and the Tree Canopy Protection Act, neither of those laws include any replanting formula for the developer to, to use to offset their tree fund mitigation requirement. So when the law was first passed, developers had the, the option to replant trees on their own site or even elsewhere in the city to offset the, the impact to tree canopy loss that their project was causing. But that was, that was subsequently repealed through legislation. And so now there is no, for, for the purpose of tree removal, tree preservation permitting and tree relocation permitting, there isn't any tree replacement planting that is a component of that. We do have some, we do have some tree replacement elements that are, that would be required if the new curb cut is approved.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners or I'll go to the Q and A and I'm going to also read some that are in the chat.
Let me ask one, two.
Go ahead, go ahead, Peter.
One is with regard to 348, a tree 348, which I understand is the heritage tree that is now got the retaining wall around it. Is that correct? It's the one at the front of the right on Nebraska. And there's been a concern expressed in the comments and in our previous hearings, indeed, the, our, our meeting Monday, that the curb cut for the parking lot and maybe the parking lot itself will damage the root ball for that heritage tree.
Yes. Yeah. So I, I mean, let me just preface what I'm about to say with the, with the following. No disturbance is almost always better. Except in the case of, say, compaction and we're, if we're trying to decompact an area. So it's not, the, it's not preferable. But what their plan calls for is a combination of remediation of activities in the critical root zone of that tree. The tree is already not in excellent condition. It's in fair condition. And so what, what they've proposed here is, what they have proposed is a plan which I believe is plausible in terms of preserving that tree while allowing the curb cut. And, and I think more than the curb, it's the, it's the actual parking lot area that I think causes a lot of, poses some of the greatest risk to that tree's well-being.
Okay. And can I just ask a general question? The, the neighbors have spoken with real passion about the beauty of this area. It is clear that some of the older trees are dead. Just a confusion of mine is large trees survive in Rock Creek Park and in nature generally for many years. It, the trees that aren't obviously dead, like the ones back by, some of the ones back by Rittenhouse. Um, how, how come they, how come you rate them? I don't remember the number. I think it's something like 17 or 18 heritage trees on the site. And I think at the beginning of your remarks, you said that 13 of them are sort of walking dead. Why is it that some of the, I mean, some of them clearly are dead, but some of them leaf out? And I mean, why are those not able to be moved and are tenable candidates for being moved?
Yeah, it's a really good question. So first of all, we're assessing trees on, on, on two basic factors, right? The first is, is it living? Like you said, they leaf out, right? And so that's assessing through the vascular health. How well is this tree, you know, moving, producing sugars and moving them throughout its tissues to keep it alive? And for some of these trees, for sure, they're leafy and they are alive. And so that's good, right? So we assess that, we observe that. But the second factor that we're looking at is the structural integrity of the tree. And so trees are, in many regards, not different than people. The older we get, the more frail we become. And these, many of the trees, the heritage trees that have been assessed and found to be hazardous have structural defects. And it's for that reason, or it's for those reasons that they're, one, not good candidates for relocation. And nor are they, nor are they good candidates for, for preservation, right? And so the example I would give is, let's imagine Maray were not proposing to convert this space into fields. And instead, the Episcopal Children's Center had, came to us and applied for permits to remove these trees because they wanted to more actively program that space for their students when they reopen and things like that. We would also approve those trees for removal as hazardous because their condition with that type of activation creates the, 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 the risk that if a tree should fail because of a structural problem, there's a high likelihood that it could have catastrophic impacts on the people that are recreating or whatever around it. So that's the, that's the basic reason. And like I said, I, I went out and evaluated every tree with the team early on. We've had several members of our staff that have been back multiple times. And I'm, I'd be happy to revisit or arrange for our staff to visit the site and, and, and answer any specific questions about trees that people might have.
That's good. Okay, let me ask a few questions that are in the chat or in the Q and A. One is, what is the fine if, let's say the trees, the heritage trees do not survive for three years? What is the fine for the penalty for, for those trees dying?
Yeah. So the fine is, I should point out, it's established by legislation. So it's not something that we arrived at through, through regulation or rulemaking. And the fine is $300 per inch of circumference. So the minimum fine, remember, these are heritage trees or trees with a circumference of 100 inches or greater. The minimum fine is $30,000 per tree.
Okay. Another question, does urban forestry actively monitor the trees for the full three years to, to make sure that they survive? Or that the fines are levied?
Yes, we do. In fact, we've had, we did have a heritage tree relocation on another site. I'm struggling to remember the exact address right now, but that tree perished in the, in, within that three-year timeframe and fines were assessed. So yeah, we're actively monitoring. And it's one of the reasons that we, we have, we have modified our tree permitting system so that it's now not only tracking trees people wish to remove, but it's also tracking trees that people have, have confirmed they will preserve, right? And it's documenting the plan that they intend to, to apply. So we now have a sort of a formal record saying you shall do X, Y, and Z to protect trees. And then similarly, we're issuing permits for tree relocation so that it's, it, it just systematizes it. It makes it easy for us to monitor over time.
Okay. Is, is there a specific requirement regarding how close a tree? Let's say that heritage tree that we were talking about earlier, how close it can be to a curb cut?
It's a little bit site-specific. You know, we look at, the first thing we're doing when we're assessing any, any tree really that we want to, that we're evaluating proposed development around is to establish the critical root zone. And so for that, we're looking, we're taking the tree's diameter. And for every inch of diameter, we're creating a radial area that equals one and a half feet for every inch of diameter. So once you've established the critical root zone, then you're sort of overlaying the, the level of impact that the proposed work would have. And you're taking, you're factoring in things like the percentage of disturbance as well as the location of the disturbance. And then there's the type of disturbance, right? So if you imagine that root zone is something like a, a slice of pie, well, if you're, if the majority of your disturbance is towards the outside of that root zone, that's a lot more favorable than if you were cutting a, your, your disturbance was much closer to the tree itself, if you will. So there's, there's a number of factors we look at. But obviously, we're, we're, we're trying to preserve the, the bulk of that, that critical root zone when we're evaluating what's plausible and, and feasible.
There's another question about tree number 348. How much grade change is proposed at the base of that tree?
Yeah, I can, let me take a look. I, I don't believe there's all that much grade change that's happening there because they, there, the, the bulk of the grade change actually happens to, on the northern end of the site, right? That's where there will be a retaining wall and that's where they have to modify the grade most so that, for instance, home, home plate, if you're looking at that, at their plans, I believe home plate will be at or close to the existing grade. And so I don't believe that there's a, a large amount of grade change to, for that proposed new curb cut.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Earl, this has been very helpful as always. We really appreciate it. And we'll look forward to when you can come back and tell us about how, how everything has gone well.
Yeah, well.
I just have one other question. You mentioned the, the steps that need to be taken before the tree is, a heritage tree is moved. Can you describe a little bit about what that is? I understand from looking at the the tree transplant program or plan that some work has to be done in the dormant season of twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So essentially, right now. What is that kind of work that has to be done? And does that enhance or jeopardize the the trees? Let's assume that something happens at the BZA and the project does not go forward. Is the tree going to be better or worse off as a result of whatever would be done to to prepare it for transplant?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the steps are just very briefly, and they include things like root pruning, right? You want to sort of make these nice clean cuts where you're eventually going to to isolate the root system that you wish to to preserve and can remain intact. So first, if you want to root prune, there's often also additional treatments done in that preserved root area. So you're oftentimes applying growth regulators, aerating that area if it's compact, et cetera, just to give the roots that are in there the best growing medium in which to sort of thrive and recover. Those activities can occur, particularly the growth regulation and whatnot, those can occur any time of the year. The root pruning would be good to do before the tree is leafed out. But I I don't think that it's considering the fact that these trees have been largely open grown as opposed to in constrained areas and constrained rooting zone areas, whatnot. I don't, I don't think there's a huge impact, but it would also depend. This is not, we wouldn't want to be initiating something like this in July. I will say that.
But let's assume that you do the root pruning in the dormant season before it leaves out. Is that going to damage the tree in any way if it stays where it is? It never gets transplanted after all?
No, there, the root pruning would be, it's an interesting balance, and it's a really good question. There, if you if you witnessed any of the media for the trees that were moved, transplanted at Fannie Mae, you may have been struck by how there was a fairly small amount of root area still preserved for these relatively large trees. And so what they're doing is they're kind of trying, they're trying to strike a balance between the amount of root system that the tree needs to to survive, but also something that's not unwieldy when they try to move it. Because you do have the risk of fracture of the of that root system that you're preserving if you're not careful as you relocate it. And so if they were to root prune now and do nothing else, those trees, they they may even find it invigorating because they would come back and they would be amending the soil where that aeration, or rather, where that root pruning occurred, which would have the effect of aerating that zone. And so no, I don't, I don't think any root pruning were to occur today in advance of tree tree relocation would harm the trees if it didn't occur.
That's great.
Yeah, and I'll just say two, two of those things if I may be, we're not, we won't issue a permit to relocate if the the sequence of when they wish to do it, we find objectionable or unlikely to succeed. That's that's one comment. And then the other is, at our website, trees.dc.gov, we have a whole permitting, we have a whole permitting and preservation page where people can they can learn about some of the techniques we've discussed here today and see examples of other heritage trees that have been relocated and so on and so forth. And review the laws as well that we've been discussing.
Okay, well, thank you, Earl, not only for your help tonight, but for your help lots of other times in helping to preserve the tree canopy in the district.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks to.
Earl, one last thing is, if Dan just in any way relate reports to anything, I just want to give a shout out to him. He's been terrific to work with.
Yeah, Dan's a great guy. I mean, we, we only have good people on staff. I'm happy to, I'm happy to say it's true. We're so fortunate with the the team we've built. So I'll share that message with them. Dan's a great guy.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You too. Take care.
Bye now.
Okay. The last agency that we were going to look at is Department of Energy and the Environment. And I don't know, John, shall I just read the questions and responses or you want to? Why don't you read the questions and responses and then we can discuss them? Maybe we'll just read one at a time.
Go one, go one at a time here? Okay. First question is, please explain how DOE's permitting process relates to the BZA process. For instance, is it typical that BZA, that the BZA order requires completion of the project in accordance with the DOE permit? At what stage in a project does an applicant typically apply to DOE for stormwater management permit? The response is that DOE reviews stormwater management plans for compliance when the project applies for a building permit, which is when the reviews are conducted by DCRA and other sister agencies. Comments on a BZA case are usually high level and based on sustainability goals due to the engineering plans not having been fully developed yet. We strongly encourage applicants to voluntarily meet with our stormwater team early in the design process to discuss general stormwater management strategies prior to submission of the building permit, which this project did in January.
So is there anything?
Not, not that we can answer any questions, but.
No, but.
So, so.
That we can follow up with DOE.
Randy, let's make clear, these are questions the commission asked DOE to respond to because they are not going to appear here tonight because, right, that's, as you stated at the beginning. Okay, so let's make sure we understand.
Okay, next one. What are the applicable regulatory requirements that Maray will have to satisfy in order to obtain the necessary permits for this project? Are these regulatory requirements modified in any way by the goal set forth in DOE's Climate Ready DC Report? And there's a link to that. If there are changes to regulatory requirements, will Maray have to meet the regular regulatory requirements as of the time the permit is issued? The response is this. As far as stormwater management is concerned, this project will generally need to, one, retain the 1.2 inch storm storm ratio, hold off on onsite until it soaks into the ground or evaporates. Also detain the two, the two year storm, which is 3.2 inches into the sewer system no faster than if the entire site were on or an undeveloped grassy meadow. And three, it would detain the 15 year storm, which is 5.2 inches, release runoff slowly into the sewer system no faster than the existing conditions. The athletic field can be exempted from the 1.2 inch retention standard only if the field is made available for use by the general public. Otherwise, it is regulated the same as the rest of the other project. DOE will base regulatory requirements on the time in which a project is submitted for building permit. We have not yet updated our storm site, our storm sizes to account for regional climate change projections, but are currently analyzing the impact of doing so.
Just so I understand it, are these numbers 1.2 inches and 3.? Is this an hour or is this the total storm? Do we know anything about?
I think it's a total storm. Is that right, John?
Total, total storm. Yeah, I think, yes, a 1.2 inch event.
And and has DOE said anything about when they're going to have a view on regional climate change?
No, or at least we didn't, we didn't, we didn't. They just, they just said they're, they're currently analyzing it.
I didn't. I'm just asking questions that we might go back to them.
Yeah, well, the the thing that's important here, I think, is that they're going to apply the standard that's in effect whenever they apply for the permit, which may be a year and a half from now. And so there may be a significant change in their standards by then.
Wait, wait, Randy, when the BZA does its analysis, that the the details of the design of the rain garden and what this project can handle in terms of storm runoff are not decided then, they're decided at some future.
No, well, some of them, the, oh, as, as I think she mentioned here in the response, they're looking at the conceptual level, not the detailed engineering level. And when they get to the permit stage, they'll look at the engineering level, but the BZA will be looking at the conceptual level. And my understanding is that DOE gives its opinion and advice to the Office of Planning. And it's actually the Office of Planning then that makes its report to the BZA. And so at this stage, they won't be looking at that engineering level, but they will be saying things like, well, is is on a conceptual level, are you going to meet the 15 year storm requirement, which is 5.2 inches? They'll be looking at that kind of thing. Not necessarily what are the details of how deep the the bedding is going to be on the the field? And how big is the rain garden? Those kinds of things. They're not looking at that now. They will when they get to the permit stage. But what what this suggests to me is that one of the things that should be a condition to the BZA order is that they comply with all of the permitting requirements at the time when they submit the permit application. And so that the BZA then, the BZA order then incorporates essentially the the permit requirements too.
Well, this may be a moot point, but because Maray has said that it's going to design to a 25 year storm level. But I can imagine one of the concerns of neighbors is if DOE comes back and says, hey, yeah, there is climate change and you know, it's, you know, really, we need to play at much higher levels of the that the the retaining wall, what it, the, the, the space and the depth needed for the rain garden will need to change to cope with that now. Maray anticipates that in some sense by designing to a higher standard than is required now. But I just I don't, and I don't have any smart ideas for how we incorporate conditions. But I do think that the one you just mentioned is necessary in our.
Right. Okay. Done. Next question.
Next question is three, are the elements of Maray's stormwater management plan at this conceptual stage consistent with the EPA DOE River Smart Program in terms of light impact development and the 1.2 inch rainfall standard? I can explain this a little bit. The proposed answer, the proposed stormwater management plan includes some bio retention facilities, tree planting and tree preservation, all of which are considered low impact development. These practices are like those in the River Smart Program, though more engineered. That we were not provided any design calculations. The conceptual plans we reviewed appeared to generally provide sufficient stormwater management if the athletic field is exempt from the 1.2 inch standard. We're all familiar with the bump outs around town, and they are part of the River Smart Program, which is an EPA initiative in cooperation with DOE. And there are two neighborhoods involved in that. One is Petworth and one is Chevy Chase. And what struck me in the description of that program was that with the 1.2 inch standard using these techniques. Get this up here. That kind of, that kind of a practice can capture more than 440,000 gallons of stormwater per 1.2 inch rain event. So I think that I just, you know, the fact that these two projects are are consistent, I think, is is notable. Any questions on that? The fourth one. On stormwater management issues, is it your understanding that the Office of Planning provides DOE DOE preliminary comments to the BZA for its consideration of an application? Does DOE typically provide written comments on an application to the Office of Planning? The answer is this, yes. DOE typically provides written comments on BZ applications to the Office of Planning. We typically comment on the extent to which and advocate for improvement on a project, our project will further DOE sustainability goals, such as those in sustainable DC. So I guess it's a two step process. DOE reports to OP, OP reports to BZA as part of their overall process. Okay, fifth. What is the practical difference in designing a stormwater management system to a 15 year storm, a 25 year storm, or a 50 year storm? What projects in the district, if any, have been designed to a 50 year or greater standard? Practically speaking, designing for larger storms means facilities and infrastructure will increase in size. For example, a project might need bigger pipes to convey larger storms. A bio retention will need to hold more stormwater by being designed deeper or with larger foot, with a larger footprint. Typically, the 15 year storm is the largest storm size DOE requires designers to achieve since this is the capacity of the district sewer pipes. On a case by case basis, we require designing to the 100 year storm if it appears a project may cause flooding to a downstream property. Other agencies may design requirements on different storm sizes. So that was the end of our questions. And then there were some comments from Julian Batista related to the Office of Planning. I don't know, should we read those off?
I think this is, we had asked whether they could share with us the comments that they made to the to.
Right.
And by the way, this is, all of this is from Julian Batista. And her title is Branch Chief Building Permit and Plan Review Regulatory Review Division at DOE.
Okay, I'll just read these comments off. It's there. Yeah, these are, these are the comments they made to OP. DOE is major concern. Will the field be publicly accessible? DOE, we want to see if the field is available to the public during non school, non school daylight hours. If the field is publicly accessible, proposed practices of detention and a bio retention to treat the parking lot runoff appear to meet project requirements. This field is private, expanding the bio retention for the parking lot will be required. This will take away parking spaces and will require patrons to potentially park on the adjacent streets. Any stormwater calculations were not discussed at the meeting, I guess, the meeting with Maray or please keep DOE in the loop regarding heritage tree transplanting and any tree preservations or tree planting plans. That was their, I guess, the gist of their communication to OP. So that's all we know right now from DOE. And we, I guess we could put these on the site, Connie or.
Yeah, we should.
Yes, after this meeting, I will copy and paste, and I will put an update onto our Maray ECC dedicated webpage pronto. So everyone gets to see it.
Thank you, Connie.
Have you got a copy of them right now?
I do. No, I have a copy. So I will do it. I just didn't have time to do it before then.
It's okay.
But I thought we'd read it out and then.
Okay, let me just see if there's any other question here that someone has.
Randy, I've got a question for John who may not know this, but that is, John, I asked you earlier if there was an existing stormwater management plan. And you said there is, but it's offsite or something. But do you know what standard that is built to?
What I was referring to was it was the River Smart Program.
Okay.
Which we just reviewed.
Yeah. But we don't know whether that meets a five year, 10 year, 15 year, 120 year standard of some sort.
Yeah, I think the thing that.
The 1.2, which I think is the 15 year, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but I'd have to.
I think what they're focusing on now is the fact that storms. I think what they're, um, focusing on now is the fact that, uh, storms, big storms are coming more frequently. And so instead of the, the 15-year storm, uh, now, now maybe a five-year storm, rather than a 15-year storm. So that's the concern, I think. Connie?
I just want to make a, a comment. Um, and this is, I guess, in response to, uh, I don't know if it's on a question. Yeah, it's Terry. Terry says the commissioners can ask questions to the agencies. How do citizens ask questions they are concerned about regarding the project? So I just want to say one thing is when the commissioners are asking questions of the agency, it's because we've heard questions, you know, through several of these meetings. And so those questions, um, I think, uh, have appeared in what we've submitted, uh, to this particular agency for their response because they, they haven't shown up here. Uh, but as we heard with, um, D dot, I think you can, you can send a email directly to them with your concerns. And so once I post, um, the, this Q and A from, uh, DOE, uh, Batista's, uh, email address will be there and you're very welcome to contact. It's their, their, their government agency employees. So if there's anything that you need to say, you could say it to them.
And my understanding is that there have been people, residents, nearby residents who have talked to DOE about stormwater management. Okay, anything else then we need to cover with regard to the Maray or should we cover the next item on the agenda? The testimony. Is that okay?
Yeah, has, have we, has everyone in the audience, have they asked all their questions before?
I think we've asked the questions or again, some comments, but.
Okay.
Connie?
Yes.
On your testimony, I said, you asked a question at the very end of your testimony. I tried to answer it. I emailed it to you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Um.
Okay.
I'm, okay.
Connie, you want to describe the, the testimony?
I will. I will. I was just copying over the last question for the Q and A, since I'm going to post everything up there and I didn't want to lose anything. Okay. So thank you for your patience. I'm very sorry that I, uh, did not get, um, you the draft testimony for our Monday meeting. Uh, but I did, uh, draft this up very quickly and I'm sure none of you have had time to really look at it, except I guess Michael gave me comments. Oh, did you read it? Thank you so much, Randy. And I guess Michael did too. I tried my best. Okay. So, um, the testimony starts off, uh, with us saying that the commission has worked with, uh, the Office of Planning to engage the community in carrying out the small area plan, right? So, um, we, uh, we say that we appreciate the council's, uh, support in providing funding for the small area plan because not every place gets one. It's, they gave out $150,000 for this to happen. And I'm, I don't know if there was more money because it went into the next year. Uh, so we talk about that and, um, I, I cite, uh, a testimony that we gave, uh, that was given in November 2020, asking for money. And so we did get a response and I think Councilmember Che was very instrumental in getting us uh, that funding. Uh, I say that the Chevy Chase Small Area Plan aims to serve as an aspirational document, containing local guidance and community census for future growth and development, um, of the Chevy Chase Upper Connecticut Avenue Commercial Corridor that is anchored in values that our community holds dear. So I say all these things. Um, and then I, I move forward to, um, the importance of a, of small area plans should not be underestimated. And, um, and then I quote, uh, Office of Planning, how they define a small area plan. And that, um, small area plans, if you read that, what Office of Planning has written or has posted in the dedicated Chevy Chase Small Area Plan uh, webpage and also elsewhere, it says small area plans are meant to provide supplemental and more detailed guidance to the comprehensive plan and may include recommendations for development and guidelines for design. And additionally, the, a small area plan may provide more fine-grained guidance on public realm, urban design, public facility needs. So then I, 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 I moved to the point that it stands to reason that the underlying planning process for developing a small area plan carries as much importance as the plan itself. So I'm trying to move into the process, uh, that we've been experiencing. Um, so I, and then I write that the planning process is of special concern to me because, um, my constituents or my small area, uh, single-member district is east of Connecticut. Um, and me along with, uh, Commissioner Goslin are on the Community Advisory Committee. We, we are two of 15 people total, um, representing, um, I guess, the commission on that committee. Uh, and then I say that last year, you know, when, when this planning process begins, it begins with the why and the what. And now we're in the how and the where part. So we're really nearing the end of this process. Um, and, um, and that this process will result in a draft plan sometime in March and then a mayoral hearing and then a legislative hearing, um, uh, before the plan is adopted. So the council will get a chance to really go, uh, over it. And I say that because we're near the end and because we're in this process that, and because this draft plan is coming, that there are lessons learned and recommendations we would like to point out and share with the council, the Office of Planning and the Ward Three communities that are embarking on small area plans themselves right now. So we know that Friendship Heights, Tenley Town is embarking, it started already. And that Cleveland Park, um, I'm not sure if Van Ness is a part of it, but I, I wrote that in, uh, will have their own small area plan. Uh, and, uh, that these lessons learned and recommendations are regarding process improvements in the planning effort. And then I go through lessons learned and I, I, I point out lesson learned one and then a recommendation that we're making. Lessons learned two, recommendation, 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 lesson learned three, recommendation, lesson learned four, recommendation. So I'll go through the lessons learned. Number one is a need for a small area plan 101 guidebook. Um, this is something I brought up right at the very beginning. I was kind of frustrated because the two paragraphs that, that we see under FAQ in the dedicated webpage for the Chevy Chase Small Area Plan. You know, it is, it is right, but it's kind of like, it's all the details you don't have. Like it's, it's, it's kind of like giving you the theory, but then you don't really know how it's really applied. You feel like you're in the dark. And so, um, I strongly, I say that at the start, no one in the community, uh, of that is embarking on a small area plan, no one in the community but the Office of Planning understands completely what a small area plan is. Because so few are carried out in the district. We don't have like a lot of examples, um, that we know of in practice. There does not exist an easy to understand small area plan 101 or small area plans for dummies, uh, guidebook for novices. And it's critically, critically important to start off this process with clarity of purpose. You know, many residents in our neighborhood who have engaged from the start continue to express confusion about many aspects of the small area plan. You know, we keep, and including the purpose of the plan, you know, how the small area plan fits in with the comprehensive plan, but in practice, what role each party in a small area plan plays, like what does the ANC do? What is the, what is Office of Planning to do? Council, private developers, all other developers, other agencies, like if we want to have mixed-use, you know, housing, affordable housing, zoning commissions, so forth, you know, how does change occur and who directs change in a development sense in the city? What language is necessary to make sure the small area plan can help shape future change as expressed by community consensus? Like the actual language and a plan, like how do we, how do we make sure that language is, expresses what we want? And then who takes over to make sure that, you know, what are the tools to make sure that, um, we can create the kind of future we would most like to see? So I recommend that, um, either the Office of Planning or the Office of the Attorney General's Land Use Section, uh, which is for public interest purposes, you know, that they create such a document that can be shared on the Office of Planning's dedicated website for small area plans. My hope is that they just have a section that's permanently there that gives you all the small area plans that have been done and that gives you like this kind of 101, like what does it mean? Um, and, um, and it spells out like what, what a small area plan is and is not, what the processes, what the players are and how a plan can be turned into actionable guidance. And so the elements I would like to see are like definitions for commonly used terms. You know, setbacks, flum, upflum, PUDs, IZ, IZ plus and phrases, matter of right, zoning codes, map amendments. How they may come up in the context of a small area plan. Uh, because I think, you know, expertise is really important, specialized vocabulary, lexicons are important, you know, it's a whole field. But when you're a novice and you don't deal with this every day, it feels like, um, it's like a barrier to understanding. And so I, I feel like they, they should provide something like that. So it makes it easier for us to understand. Also, an element would be the role of each entity involved in the planning phase. I really loved when we had the information exchange session seven with the Office of Attorney General, you know, I had gone over their slides before they actually had it when we, before we had the session. And I asked them to be very clear about the different parties. And so they had a diagram about who does what. And I felt that that was really, you know, informative, which is what I, I'm hoping to see in a small area plan 101. Um, another element is the role of each, um, sorry, uh, what community members should expect as they move through the process, the phases of engagement, which I talk about a little bit more in another lessons learned. And what an eventual draft small area plan will look like with examples of language attached to express needs, desires and concerns of the community. And then another element would be how the language in a small area plan that carries aspirations for the future gets turned into actionable zoning or map amendments and who is responsible for that translation? I feel like this is all like, we're in the dark. We don't really know. I'd like more of an explanation there. And in addition, you know, for communities who wish to request a small area plan, it would be good to add how they can do that in the document, like how does this process work? Uh, and, and then I go to lessons learned two. So those are, um, lesson learned one, the need for an S, SAP 101, and then recommendations. Lesson learned two is office, office planning at the start gave us six phases of their engagement in sequential order. That was listening and learning, a kickoff, visioning, plan development, the legislative process, and then monitoring. And, um, and that, and that, that, that for us, the budget began in FY 2021, but the kickoff part of it didn't start until March 4th, 2021. Um, so it, so, so it should have started, October 2020 starts fiscal year 2021, but it took five months before we had a kickoff because they had listening and learning. And that phase, listening and learning was, uh, for the Office of Planning to talk to a few people to decide which members that they wanted to recruit for the Community Advisory Committee, um, and other stuff that they were doing, I guess, but it kind of left us in the dark. And I think we were just waiting because it was five months in. And it was very frustrating. I think it was a long and frustrating wait for the community that resulted in a lot of complaints and misinformation in the chat when they finally had the kickoff, um, as the project team was dealing with like technical difficulties. So we were kind of disappointed in all that. Um, and then, um, uh, and then I also just mentioned briefly that they did during that five months in that October period, because we invited them. Uh, the project team did give a, a high-level presentation of small area plans, but that was sort of all that the community saw. Um, and then the visioning part of it, which was listening, learning, the kickoff, then the visioning side of it really didn't kick into high gear until about June. You know, June was when, uh, the Office of Planning scheduled four virtual, uh, visioning workshops. Uh, and then another long wait commenced as they, um, experienced difficulty in bringing in their contractor to do the penultimate design charrette and who was not even on-boarded until mid-November, which was well into the next fiscal year. Um, so, and that, and then I mentioned that the scheduling of events came in dribs and drabs, which did not give the community confidence of what to expect in the planning process. So my recommendation is a pre-kickoff meeting to occur before the listening and learning. Uh, for the Office of Planning to set the stage for the coming year and explain the work involved and even just explain the phases. Okay. Another recommendation is that the listening and learning phase include scheduled conversation or open office hours with the project that the community can have with the project team so that anyone in the community can ask questions about the process before the formal kickoff. So it's like some engagement there. Um, and another recommendation is that the Office of Planning should share at the start, a draft timeline matched, like an actual timeline matched to the phases of engagement to give a sense of the Office of Planning commitment to a transparent process and an understanding of how the community is expected to engage, like what in these phases are we going to have a survey, a visionary workshop, a walkthrough, a, you know, what is it? Um, and then when will it take place? So for example, by the time the kickoff meeting for the small, for the Chevy Chase Small Area Plan took place in March, there were only six months left. And then we had a summer in between to finish up the process by the end of the original fiscal year. And there was a general sense that we were already behind schedule and having a robust process and engagement with the community that we had hoped for. To address these concerns, um, the commission enacted several resolutions, um, last year encouraging the Office of Planning to be more engaged and collaborative, as well as taking leadership ourselves in engaging experts on relevant topics to involve the community in what we call it information exchange sessions, um, with this eighth one coming up soon. So that's lesson learned number two. Number three. Attracting attention, building community and reaching consensus. Um, it, it, it takes, I said, there is a district-wide problem of informing residents of upcoming activities engaging them. But things like big posters, yard signs to drive attention to the dedicated website, mailings, flyers were not employed effectively. Um, in addition, with the pandemic making in-person meetings very difficult, most of the workshops were held virtually, virtually while office hours with the project team were held in person, but were not well-attended. As the Office of Planning noted, it is incumbent, they say this on the dedicated webpage. It is incumbent on the project team to look beyond established groups to ensure marginalized and/or underrepresented voices and perspectives are elevated throughout the planning process. And I say the commission believes the Office of Planning fell short in this regard. Um, it's, uh, you know, and then my recommendation is we recommend a budget for materials to be distributed to the community. Including, um, mailings to residents and businesses concerned with or affected by small area plan for each phase of engagement. Posters and yard signs to direct the community to upcoming events and the, and to direct the community to the dedicated webpage for more information and I left it as what other ideas we have. And, uh, and then for lesson four, it's something that Commissioner Gore brought up, which is for, and, and I also wanted to talk about this, which is this affordable housing aspect, racial equity. How do the mayors and the council's goals for the district get translated into the SAP? And I don't have a recommendation for that and I didn't flesh that out and then the conclusion. But that's my thinking is, is both to express that the process itself needs, needs to be really looked at again and really to help other communities, um, get a better start than we did. Um, but also to say that we still have time before we go so that we can, you know, end well, I guess, is the message. Peter?
Um, I haven't had a chance to review this testimony. I will. Um, my impression, listening to your presentation is that basically it's framed as advice to OP and to the broader community about future uh, SAPs. Uh, and that we only back in to our disappointments with our SAP. And it seems to me, uh, that we need to say right up at the top, um, that, um, uh, we're disappointed particularly with this penultimate, uh, uh, event. And although we haven't seen the fix yet, which will be the 23rd, um, I have to say, I, um, I'm, I'm pretty skeptical it's gonna i- in any way solve the problem. So that I'm going to have problems, uh, supporting this testimony unless we can speak about directly about our own SAP and whether we think it has properly served our community.
Yes, I think I, I touched upon it and I was trying to get at some of these issues, but I didn't get, have time to do exactly that, which I think we should address. So I agree with you. I'm an agree, a violent agreement with you on, on fleshing that part out.
Michael?
I just wanted to say, Connie, that, that last recommendation that you left blank, that's where I gave you some language.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I ran out of steam. I'm sorry. I just ran out of steam and I was worried that it was, and I also wanted to ask one more thing. If I should add it or not, but just.
Well, let me tell you right now, you've got far more than you can compress into five minutes.
Oh, no, I know that, but my God, have you seen your own, have you seen your own testimonies? They're like seven pages. Mine is only five pages and it's 12.5.
But, but Randy, we can, we can submit the full testimony in writing.
As much as you want to write, but I, I'm warning you, pare it down to five minutes because they will not let you go for more than five minutes. And this is, uh, before committee of the whole and Mendelson is very sticky about that. So.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I don't expect to read this out loud.
Okay, you, you've got to, it's got to be concise. Okay, you've got to, it's going to be concise.
Yes.
I, I, I agree with Peter though, that we certainly need to mention the fact that, you know, we didn't get the kind of visual demonstrations.
Correct.
That we absolutely need. I mean, those are essential and we haven't gotten any of that yet. Really, that's satisfactory.
And Randy, it's not at all clear that when they do come up with whatever they come up with it, they'll explain how they came to it. You know, we have all this input such as it is, but what comes back may or may not connect to it.
Yeah. Well, what I'm going to suggest is that, that Connie and Peter get together further on this. What I would suggest is that we have a vote tonight so that we can say that we approved it. Pending the, the finalization of the testimony by Peter and Connie and circulation to the, the other commissioners for final sign off. But we can, we can vote on conceptually, this is what we're going to do.
When do you have to do it?
24th.
Fourth.
It's, it's next week.
Okay.
And. And, yep.
Okay. Well, I, I can vote for it if, if it's conditional on our.
Okay, that, that, that's what I would, I would propose. So Connie, you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I move that we approve my draft testimony with a caveat or with a condition that I will work with Peter on bringing that point about our disappointment with this penultimate design charrette and the details there, because I do think those, that's another lessons learned frankly, for them, which I did not, I, I did not flush out.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks to all the attendees who stayed to the bitter end. Appreciate it. And our next meeting is going to be on the 24th, actually, when we talk again, a special meeting on Maray to discuss the draft resolution, which John and I are feverishly working on.
Send me the tape.
I will do that soon as I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.